I'd like to welcome everyone to our city council meeting today. It's Monday, April the 18th at 5:00. And we'll call this meeting to order. If everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Deb.
Here.
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 Okay, we do have a quorum. And we have a couple of items on the agenda, a couple of changes. Agenda item number 27, Don Schultz has withdrawn his zoning request, so we will need to remove that off the agenda this evening. And then also maybe if we can move, agenda item number 25, I believe with the senior center, maybe move that up to, at the start of new business. Okay, move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Just like to thank Shay Tilges as our videographer this evening. And I don't have anything else across the mayor's desk tonight. Does anybody, council have anything they'd like to share?
I guess I probably should mention, just because there's so many people here in the audience that can probably go to it, the arts council's putting on the student art show tomorrow. And that's, I believe, 9:30 in the morning is, the students will be there and the public's welcome to join them. And then the evening, 5 to 7, is open also. So we're going to keep the show open a little bit longer so people can stop there after work. We've had people miss it.
Where is it at?
It's, what's that?
Where is it at?
Oh, it's out at Eastland Plaza, across the fairway there. It's right in the middle of the strip. So that would be a good thing to attend. I know the people probably won't see this on TV until it's done, but at least you knew it happened. So anyway, you're all welcome.
Okay, thank you. Move to agenda item number six and update from the city administrator.
Spring here and spring and summer programs kicking off despite the next three days snow. I'd like to invite Recreation and Community to theaters. I'm going to just try to provide an update on our current rec programs.
Okay, so as you guys know, with spring, I am very, very busy this time of year. So some of our programs we have are co-ed youth soccer, which is currently underway. We're undefeated, so that's really good. We have 30 kids out for the third, fourth, and fifth, and sixth grade level. Little League softball and baseball, that is also, yeah, that is starting to happen right now. Practices are going to start up this next week. We have 97 boys out, 70 girls. So those numbers are very, very nice. The games will get kicked off May 23rd. So end of May we'll be getting the games going. And adult co-ed sand volleyball, that belief right now is approaching even though we have snow on the ground. We will have sand volleyball coming up. That season is June 1st through August 17th with the tournament to follow. In this year, we're going to have our first annual alumni golf tournament. As of right now, we have 16 teams and we have multiple hole sponsors. We have 13 hole sponsors. So this is going to be a very good program, good event to bring in money for our rec department. So that'll be really good. As far as recreation, that's all I've got for right now.
Any questions for Nick or anything?
Any questions?
Where's the golf tournament at, Nick?
That's going to be a river of golf course.
Okay.
River.
Thanks, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
Then just a few other quick items. City cleanup days will be held on May 6th and 7th this year. So that's when there's a setup down at Tex Park to drop items off as well as the service groups coordinate picking setup from people's homes. So details and announcements will be coming out here shortly on that, but I just want to get that everyone's radar, May 6th and 7th for spring cleanup days. And then spring here as well, I want to remind folks of our residential tree program. This is our second year with the program, started last year in partnership with A and U. What it allows is a rebate up to $75 per tree. You have to know they meet all the program requirements, but it is to be able to plant trees and either go right away if it's permitted based on their utilities are, or on private properties. So private property trees are covered by A and U and the right-of-way ones through the city of Algonah. Maybe have an announcement on our city website, so folks go there, it will pop up right there on the front page on that program. But the short story of it is it's $75 as a premium purposeful rebate to plant trees on residential property. And then finally, I just want to give kind of status update on the McCoy Street, Phillips Street, and Call Street parking lot reconstruction projects. We have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for next week. We will kind of determine our phasing and timeline for that project. So once that is established in that meeting, the following week we expect to make announcements of when we'll have the neighborhood meetings invited affected property owners and residents to come to the meeting and learn about the project and how it will be affected and what accommodations will be made. So that was information will be coming out here later this month on the scheduled that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number seven, this is the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any item that's not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone here in the council chambers that would like to speak? Barb, is there anyone on the phone?
I don't have any.
Okay. We'll move then to agenda, or yeah, agenda item number eight, which is the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from our April 4th work session and council meeting, approving the bills to be paid this cycle, approve the department reports, as well as the minutes from the various boards and commissions that have met, and approve Jacob's administrator's report. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. We'll move then to agenda item number nine, a public hearing. It's 5:08 and I'll open that public hearing, and this is regarding an ordinance amending the zoning map.
This public hearing is regarding a zoning request submitted by Pharmacist Mutual to rezone a property outlined here in the way that's 6.1 acres is currently zoned agricultural. They're requesting that it be rezoned to Highway Service Business District. We have not received any comments from the public since the notice was published.
It's 5:09 and we will close that public hearing. We'll move to agenda item number 10, which is also an ordinance amending the zoning map, and it's 5:09 and we will open that public hearing.
This is an amendment regarding they proposed a planned residential unit development or PRUD overlay zoning classification. It is the east from most 130 feet right there at the south of the intersection of Spruce Street and Finn Drive. The zoning amendment is being requested to accommodate a development of a series of triplex townhomes. We have, the approved would be a PRUD be superimposed over the underlying zoning district, which is currently zoned R and four. That would not be changing. We have not had any comments submitted since the notice was published.
Okay, thank you. It's 5:10 and we will close public hearing then on agenda item number 10. We'll move then to new business and we would like to move agenda item number 25 up, which involves a street closure and the Algonah Senior Center.
Do you need to represent the senior center? Go over the request.
Thanks for having us here tonight. Did you all get copies of what I gave to the officer? Okay, we're asking for a temporary closure of the street, portion of the street, Walnut And as is described in the description above, this will be for the Freedom, it's free, our Freedom is not free rally that we're having, we're going to have bands there and everything. Are there any questions that you have in regards to the request?
And just for the public, this is, will occur on Saturday, July 2nd?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm assuming you were asking for a stop sign on Main Street there.
Yes.
I'm assuming you're expecting parking to be in the KC parking lot there?
Yes.
Okay.
That has been approved.
Okay. By them? For parking, okay.
Okay. No, it actually looks like a fun event. I've got it written down in my calendar, so I like the bands too, familiar with them all.
Anybody have any other questions for Mark? Okay, thank you, Mark.
All right, thank you.
Entertain a motion then to approve that request.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Jody, to approve the street closure for the senior center. Any discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb?
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Okay, agenda item number 11, under new business, this is the first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map.
This paves the same property that we have the public hearing on just west of Pharmacist Mutual to be rezoned from Agricultural, Highway Service Business District.
Move to approve the ordinance.
We need to waive the first reading?
Waive the first reading, sorry.
Okay.
Forgot about that, it's first reading.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second then to waive the first reading. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
Have a motion from Rodney, a second from Tyler, to approve the first reading. Any discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb?
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 12, this is a resolution approving a conceptual development plan.
So this is regarding the PRUD overlay zoning classification that we have the public hearing on. As part of that ordinance for the overlay district, there needs to be approval of the conceptual development plan, which basically shows the existing infrastructure in relation to surrounding properties and what the concept for the development is. Then, once that's approved and if the ordinance is approved, a final development plan is submitted and approved. It can be approved administratively, as long as it's consistent with the approved conceptual development plan, which is approved council now. But if we're to be needing to turn it away on proposed development, it would require coming back for council approval. So leave a...
Dave, would you like to, like, speak on the plans for the development?
You had up there, there's a three-unit proposed development at this particular point in time. The unit furthest to the east or closest to Finn Drive is anticipated to be a one-story construction. And the other two to the west are planned two-story construction at this particular point in time. I haven't been decided definitively whether these will be condominiums or whether they will be individual separately owned lots and units with a party wall. That is being worked out. A lot of that is going to depend on the lenders and what they might want to see do. You plan on starting these in July. And the idea is that this is going to be a stepped development for all of the lots that are being purchased out there by A, A, D, D, C at the present time. So A, A, D, D, C is going to buy these lots on Spruce Street and then turn around and turn them over to 3D. And they're going to be developed sequentially. At the next point in time, the day is ready, we'll come back in perhaps with a different plan. A lot of this, what's going to happen is going to be dictated by what the market tells him they want to see out there in terms of units and stories and that type of thing. Each one of the lots or each one of the units will have its own driveway, will have its own garage, utilities. They are scuffed out there right now and have located the, well, there's a drainage tile out there and that needs to be located because that's going to dictate on as you move further west on what will be able to be constructed outside of the parameters of leaving that tile alone.
That next lot to the west there, is that a vacated alley?
Street. Street.
Street, okay. Because I knew we vacated the block north of that, but this was vacated also at that time apparently. Okay. Because it's kind of a street to nowhere, it goes right to the railroad, so.
There are actually two big empty streets of lots being purchased by A, A, D, D, C. There's one further to the left.
Do you have any idea where the tile is? I mean, probably have a hunch?
No, we have a pretty good idea. We have a couple, three different maps that is, do not all coincide. We have to be onsite physical and valuable. I mean, we have to send a locator down the tile and locate exactly where it's at.
Okay.
Then we'll see where we are. We have to be 10-foot on each side of that east and west. So as we progress with development from the east to the west, we're going to see where that's at and how that device is set up. And when we started this, it was all closed. We couldn't get in there and see it. Now that it's thought out, we can get the locator through that tile, like it is in the C. Old inmate is going to do all the title stuff and all the engineering on the site. We're going to locate that and we're going to have it on the drawing initially. One will be setbacks and one will be further, well, there will be a little round.
We've referred this to P and Z, didn't we?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Name that if it was on March 29th and recommended approval of the ordinance change.
Okay. So everybody knows that, yeah.
Will attend here.
I'll move to approve the conceptual development plan.
Second.
We have a motion from Brad, a second from Harley. Any other discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb?
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number 13, this is the first reading of an ordinance amending the Algonah zoning map.
So this ordinance superimposes the PRUD overlay district over that 130 feet wide section that the conceptual development plan was just approved for. The underlying zoning district is R and four multi-family. That will stay in place. What the PRUD does is allows additional development tools for that lot. Within the interior of the larger area, where setbacks are, there's flexibility as long as the density, the per-unit density of the underlying zoning district is still met, and then the setbacks to adjacent properties is still maintained, which were both, as they were, or both meet that criteria in the conceptual development plan that was approved. So this would, this ordinance would oppose that overlay district, the R and four still being there, so the PRUD doesn't, the PRUD does not have to be utilized to still be developed as R and four. So it's just another development tool option.
I'll make a motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Brad, a second from...
Whoever you take.
Rodney?
Whoever you take.
Rodney had. To waive the first reading, any discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb?
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Make a motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the first reading. Any discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb?
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 14, this is an ordinance amendment request from Algonah Community Schools. And Joe Carter's going to come speak.
A few weeks ago, Mr. Mayor Mueller, our transportation director and herself, met with Barb Smith and Kurt to talk about the areas around their schools and what we needed to do to keep those areas safe, changes we need to make, additions. We identified some things we need to do systematically involving some painting and some other things to make those areas better and to align with code. And we also identified some things in ordinance that we're here to ask you of to better align to procedures, procedures, practices, and to keep those areas as safe as we can. There's three of those. At Brighton Elementary, we're asking for a no parking area on the west side of the school, which is the bus loading and unloading zone. At Lucia Wallace Elementary, we're asking for a stop sign to be added on the west side of Lucia Wallace on the corner of Kennedy and Jerome to also be added to the ordinance. And at the middle school and high school, we're asking for permission to close Orchard Street at Hale Street from 7:45 to 8:15, as well as from 3:00 to 3:30. And for the ordinance to be amended to include three portable stop signs on Sample Street. These are things we think will be beneficial to those areas. We've also worked with Bo and his staff on, you know, those things and what's best to keep the traffic to the speed and the pace that we need in those during departure times and as well as when kids are coming to school.
I have one question, looking at the one at Orchard Street there at the high school. I guess my question is, why does the city own that? Why is that street there? Why doesn't Algonah just, the school just have it? Because it's a street to nowhere, the school owns the east end of it.
Yeah, today it's, yeah, a street to nowhere. You know, if you kind of just look at the development patterns of the city, you could see, you know, it eventually potentially going there to the east, which, you know, why, you know, the city would maintain ownership of that for when there is potential development out there. We have that street, but today for all, you know, practical purposes, it only serves the school and is used by the school, I think.
Yeah. I mean, in, as long as we own it, we really should be cleaning it, maintaining it, whatever. When it's virtually school property, I guess I'm not sure why we don't just close it and vacate it and sell it to them.
That'd be something other council, those who have the council could request to, you know, threaten that to be done. I would just, you know, advise, you know, to think about just the long-term consequences that may have of as we develop to the east, knowing that, you know, kind of, city owns itself, it's kind of landlocked to the south, to the west. We do have area, but the airport's out there and that has zoning restrictions on development. It's a kind of our natural growth area is to the east as we have highway, teen, and industrial to the north. It's obviously nothing but plans for now, but one of those things of 10, 20, 50 years down the road, maybe necessary.
Okay, I think it's something we probably ought to look over and look into what future of that.
Mayor, the things that Joe's asking for are things we're currently doing. They're not asking for additional things. We just need to get them into ordinance so they're law. So if somebody's running a stop sign, the police department has a right to ticket them. And also across from Bryant School, city staff is asking for, of course, straight across from the front of Bryant School, the west end of that block for one car length to be no parking where the portable stop signs put out. And then at the east of the block, two spots to be no parking because it's extremely hard when you get by Bryant to get around those stop signs within the car park right here and to get back around it when there's two cars parked at this end. For safety purposes, we're asking for those three spots to become no parking as well.
So the next steps would be for our future council meeting, I imagine in May, we develop an ordinance addressing these requests. It's just kind of coordinating among the schools and getting what's in practice, diversity code, as well as with that, there's still language in our code about temporary stop signs and school zones at the old OB language now apart. And so we look at, you know, removing that from our code because it's irrelevant. So just kind of one of those, just getting things up to date to how they are today.
So for Bryant Elementary, what are those spots currently used for? Is that just school parking or is that load and unload for vehicles?
School parking.
Okay.
Teacher parking, we're already on there. And we discussed it with Joe and he didn't think there'd be any major issue by taking those three parking spots out either.
Okay. And then for the other, the other ones, the three portable stop signs, I thought they were already there, I was going to ask them.
They're already there, they're just not in our ordinance. So they're asking for us to add it to our ordinance, so they're official stuff.
So how about Lucia Wallace then? That one just says stop sign, it doesn't say portable stop signs. Is that one the one that's going to be a permanent one versus one they roll out today?
No, that's a portable, that's just not in the ordinance that's there today.
So, and that was very, because right now like on Harriet Street, there is a three-way stop sign, and so that traffic on Harriet is stopped, whereas the stop sign on Jerome is just a two-way, so there's no actual signal to stop when you're coming from on Jerome north. So it would basically match it to the three-way stop like it is on Harriet.
So at this point, you, do you need anything except that we're...
Just need some...
No, motion to direct city staff is what you're saying?
Right.
That you're saying? I shouldn't be the one to do the motion because I'll be abstaining.
Really? I'll make a motion to direct city staff to draft an ordinance that we can review at the next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Jody, a second from Don. Is there any other discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb?
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Motion carried, thank you. Thank you, Joe. Agenda item number 15, this is a resolution approving a transfer of funds.
John Bilstein, Algonah Municipalities General Andrew is here to discuss the first resolution that we have up here to, to A and U, is the transfer of funds agreement, which our current agreement was last updated in 2018. John, do you want to just kind of give a highlight?
Sure, welcome. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your time. As you may recall, there has been an agreement between the city about going on and Algonah must be to these associations established in the 1950s. That agreement has changed over time. Most recently, Jacob and I have met and discussed a few changes to the agreement that more memorialize what we're doing today. One of those is a change that we worked with Deb on, and that was to start billing monthly. We used to bill at the end of the year, which made it much more difficult to determine how much you were using, the amount of money, all those types of things. So we made that change. That is one option. So we made that change, that is one option, or one of the items that we included in this agreement. And the second is just to identify that when we do have things we work together on, that we will bill at our cost. So there won't be markets to that, which is again, something that we do today. But we wanted to memorialize that in the agreement. And also, as Jacob just noted here, that each year under this agreement that we've had most recently, there is an annual transfer in lieu of taxes, in lieu of property tax payments, from the electric utility of four hundred thousand dollars and from the water utility of forty-five thousand dollars. For the cable TV system that we provide for the video service, that is a five percent franchise fee. That is the same as what MediaCom provides to the city council. So those are the three major items that are part of the agreement along with how we bill for sanitary and storage. And that's all memorialized in the agreement. Any questions about the proposed changes? Pretty simple, and the other thing I think, as Jacob may have noted here, is that we're including the city EMS in video or cable TV services as part of the free service piece of it as well, which was our original plan, then we realized there were a couple of other things that we needed to get updated.
Any questions for John? All right, thank you, John.
I move to approve this agreement.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Jody, any discussion? Roll call, Deb?
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number sixteen, this is a resolution also approving transfer of funds. John?
Sure, thank you again. This resolution is the one that usually the council is happy to see. And this is the one where we just do the annual transfer of funds. As you may recall from our discussions in the past, under Iowa code, we are required, the board is required to determine that there is actually excess revenue in place to make the transfer. So we do that calculation every year, there is excess revenue. So the Board of Trustees has approved the transfer of the four hundred thousand for the, from the electric utility, forty-five thousand dollars from the water utility, and additional ten thousand dollars from the electric utility that will be for seasonal decorative lighting as we're looking at, as we are putting in new lighting in two thousand twenty-two.
Motion to approve the resolution approving transfer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this transfer, any discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb?
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Agenda item number seventeen, this is a resolution pertaining to TAFE properties.
Seventeen and eighteen, I'll provide an overview jointly because they pertain to the same funding source. But as you recall, earlier this year, in partnership with two developers, the city submitted grant applications to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the community development block grant, COVID-nineteen funding. Specifically, it was seeking funds to finance the development of upper story apartments in downtown. So the two developers, Tate Properties LLC and the Team B D Properties LLC. We found out earlier this month that those grants were awarded. So the Tate Properties LLC, that would be for three oh seven East State Street, Old Veronica's next to the movie theater, to develop two upper story apartment units there. So what this resolution does is approve the grant agreement with the Iowa Economic Development Authority, laying out the conditions of the funding. The city is the actual grant recipient, and there's a sub-recipient agreement with the developer. That's a fourth through development agreement, which this resolution also approves, which more or less just takes the contract language and applies it to the developer. And then approves various CDBG forms on environmental review, historical review, as well as procurement standards. These, these are federal monies that, as you can imagine, come with a lot of federal springs. So this is a dictatorial process in terms of these, the money, these are the terms you agree to. So for this one would be for Tate Properties LLC. And that grant award would be up to four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to develop two apartment units, in accordance with the CDBG requirements. Any questions on, on that program or?
No, I think we had a pretty lengthy discussion last time, but it was, we were just waiting to see if the grants were awarded. And we had a representative.
With, with the environmental reviews that have to take place, we're still several months away before any construction work would begin. But there's a three-year time period for the funds to spend.
Okay. I move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Harley, a second from Don, any other discussion? Hearing that, roll call, Deb?
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number eighteen, anything else? Jacob, you want to say to that or?
This resolution would be approving the contract for Team B D Properties LLC for redevelopment of three apartment units in the upper story of seventeen East State Street, known as the Old Mini Mall. This project received a grant award of up to five hundred thousand dollars.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Tyler, a second from Brad, any discussion?
Only to say that I'm happy to see the development happening here. This first one had been lived in not that many years ago, but the second one, I think, has been vacant a long time, so real happy to see that get used again.
Vote, please, Deb?
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number nineteen is a resolution approving two contracts with NIAH-COG or North Iowa Area Council of Governments.
So with those grant awards in place, part of the requirements for CDBG programs that you have is qualified grant administrators, also the person operating, tech, or firm operating technical assistance of the general administration, that's just making sure that you're compliant with all the federal requirements, submitting the bras, doing the environmental reviews, historic reviews, and the technical assistance side of things would be things like, you know, let the, or let paint, testing and abatement if necessary, working on procurement for the contractors to do work, so it's on the actual construction and the facility itself. For, this resolution approves two contracts with NIAH-COG, one each for the two properties that the grant just approved for. The cost of each contract is thirty thousand dollars. A hundred percent of that is paid for through CDBG grant funds.
Motion to approve resolution.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody, any discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb?
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number twenty, this is a resolution concerning the two thousand twenty-two airport hangar door replacement.
This is a resolution approve the plant specifications, form of contract, and go into bid for the two thousand twenty-two hangar door replacement project. This is on the main shop hangar out there. The city received a grant from the DOT to fund seventy-five percent of the project. The city provided the local match at this point, it's estimated to be around twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollars. Resolution sets the bid opening for May tenth at two P M. And then a public hearing on proposed plant specifications and cost estimate for May sixteenth at five P M. And we expect later that day is when we have a resolution working the contract for this project.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Brad, a second from Don, any discussion? Roll call, Deb?
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Number twenty-one is a resolution pertaining to the airport runway extension.
As a part of an earlier environmental review for the future runway extension, it would be to the east. The map up here shows generally where that extension would be in the dark gray there. It was found that approximately zero point six two acres of wetlands will be disturbed. Since this is federal funding that's paying for the extension, federal rules apply, and they're required to offset that in one way or the other. The like, or excuse me, the airport board had discussed it. They've really got two options, they can either construct wetlands on the property to offset or buy credits elsewhere, given the nature of the airport, wetlands and waterfall and birds are not something you want to attract. So this resolution approves a contract with White Fox Farms LLC to purchase those wetlands credits. They would only be purchased once the credits become available. And again, this would be a hundred percent funded by the federal government, more or less using the city as a conduit to move federal money from one federal agency to the other.
Yeah, this is about as hokey as carbon credits. But I guess if the Fed requires that, you have to do it, so I'd move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Tyler. I'll skip the discussion. Vote, please, Deb?
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Harley. Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Whoop, yes, gotta help myself.
Motion carried, thank you.
Going down the line.
Agenda item number twenty-two, this is a resolution pertaining to the two thousand twenty-two construction projects.
Golden Nick, I have, the, the city had listed proposals for inspection and construction material testing for the McCoy and Phillips Street reconstruction project. See proposals from three firms. Chosen valid testing name was the recommended firm from the Golden Nick. They had the lowest per unit cost, the total cost varied, but the important numbers, the per unit, because they use different assumptions on how many trips they might be making. So it means it being what the actual use is. And then with that, since we have procured for that project, this resolution also approves using cedar value testing, or chosen valid testing for any other construction projects in this calendar year, building season that might need testing. CBT has featured the testing for us on last year's projects when we did a, a good job.
Motion to approve resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Tyler, any discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb?
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Number twenty-three, this is a resolution approving the city ambulance administrator position.
And this is just a matter of semantics, but it's, just clarifying, it's going to be ambulance director position just to, to the Cassuth County EMS administrator. We want to just make sure that when we're making reference to one or the other, we have distinct type.
Two separates.
It's not getting confused. This position the city previously had, which recently held up here in Maryland before its resignation in twenty fifteen, when we saw city EMS operations. We were in this transition period of planning for how this hybrid shared county city system might work. At that time, we did not place that position. As we've gone through implementation, Phil Alvarez from Cassuth County EMS Administrator is here, he can speak to this. We think it's, we should look at this option as an alternative to, to provide the service needs as well as the administrative oversight, that some of our ongoing challenges is being able to get enough full-time staff. But even with that, you know, full-time staff, there's a lot of just that day-to-day of administering that, the way our shifts work, we don't have people, you know, necessarily overlapping in their shifts. So this position would really coordinate those efforts, be the, the direct contact with the city and how, how we keep these accountable. Would there be a, a cost savings with this position and the salary? But they'd be able to respond to calls during the day, during the regular shift, as well as, you know, depending, you know, whether before or after the regular hours and the comping that time. And then for a couple days a week, and then a few days a week, just focus on the administrative side of things. Phil, you want to come up with that? Do that or kind of talk about the justice of relooking at this position?
Yeah, so Jacob's throwing it up pretty well. As we've evolved into the new system that we started, what, July twenty twenty, so about into our second year of this system, we didn't have anything to go by, you know, we kind of started this with an advisory board and had a plan, had a vision, but we didn't have anything to go by, so we kind of set it up with what we had, knowing that we'd have to make changes and move one along. Staffing's been very difficult. It's probably been a huge challenge going forward. We really need to focus on that, to continue where we're going with the system county-wide. Staffing is huge, it's been very difficult. Started in twenty twenty, when, when COVID began back in March, pretty much all the paramedic schools closed their doors. There was no new paramedic classes offered, so we did not have any new people coming into the system. Plus, COVID took a lot of our people away from EMS. So what we lost, we weren't able to, to put back into the system. Thank goodness they're, they're going again now, but a lot of these schools are two-year process. There are some one-year schools out there trying to get some new people into the system as quickly as we can. So I am looking forward to working with this person. There's a lot of things that we do that intermingled between the county, between the city. So it's not going to be just a city position, it's not just a county position. It's a position where we have to work together to, to make this happen. Tomorrow morning at nine o'clock will be the first reading of the resolution declaring EMS as essential service in Cassuth County. So a year and three quarter later, we're finally, finally have that on the agenda for tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. There was a lot of time guidelines, a lot of guidelines that we had to follow to, to get to this point. So I'm excited about that, that's tomorrow morning, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. I do have an article coming out in the newspaper next Thursday after this first reading, happens to kind of explain what the process is and where we're going from that. So after that, this summer, we'll be holding a lot of community events around, around the county to educate people. Last thing, we want us people to go to the ballot and not understand what, what is on the ballot in November. So we'll be doing a lot of that this summer. That's going to tie me up pretty tight between now and November, but we'll get here.
With me, you know, starting the hybrid system in July twenty, we're quite sure we have a timeline. It's going to be, I was kind of hoping it'd be maybe a year or so, and then we get to this whole county wide true system, obviously kind of that's the case there in our looking at July twenty-four, assuming the passage of sixty percent of the vote in November twenty-two, and that gets on the ballot for then. And, you know, a lot of the, you know, sort of like, well, let's see what we can make do. And just with the complexities of how that staffing works, I mean, we have a couple dozen people on payroll, and then with the time between full-time PRNs and volunteers, as well as, you know, the regulations and making sure that reports are getting done, trainings. This position too, we see is being about that, hopefully helping recruit additional part-time, full-time staff and then land them. And then just kind of clarifying that, that chain of command and coordination of just the, the operations. You know, we, we think, you know, there'll definitely be a savings in terms of being able to respond to some of those calls, being able to relieve our, our, our staff on some of those, on transfers or things like that. They, you know, they work a lot of hours and they pick up a lot of overtime. Certainly appreciate that, but ideally, you know, we, we want to have to be in a position to ask them to consider picking that up. And then also, I think, even the benefit of that workshop, it's a sort of a pleasure. But, you know, just up here at City Hall and, you know, the amount of administrative time between myself, Deb, this position will be able to focus on the service justice and give attention to needs.
So knowing the staffing problem, do you see this problem alleviating at all? Or, you know, what does the next few years bring? That's not a good point we're at right now.
Right. Yeah, unfortunately, it's not just us. It's all the communities around us as well that are advertising.
They're all going to be competing for those same people.
We're competing. So our biggest drawback that we currently have is our scheduling, is the way that our schedule works here. Trying to staff two locations, you know, provide people countywide. So we're trying to come up with ways to be more competitive with our scheduling to attract those people. As far as this salary-wise, as far as the dollars that we're offering, we're pretty much in line with everybody else. It's just how can we attract them with the equipment we have, the system that we're building, and the, just try to come up with ideas to attract people to come here. Scheduling is the biggest thing that we have to work on to correct.
I guess I think of, last week I read something in the paper about a police officer who discovered his calling. We rode around Tom Cogvale for a day. And I wondered, I imagine EMS would be much more difficult to give a young person any right-of-along training.
So we have, we have reached out to the schools. We have done some job shadow programs.
Okay.
We have had some kids come in and done some right-of-along programs. We're also doing May Term this year with Oklahoma. So we're going to try to reach out to North Cassuth and Bishop Meergan as well, try to offer these kids another option.
That's good.
That's out there. So we're trying to get creative doing some of those things and hopefully we can attract a few.
Yeah, okay.
Just a quick, piggyback on this kind of about the schedules that we currently do. First out on call and then second out, you know, three days on, three days off. You know, ideally if we get to a point where it's just a twenty-four on, twenty-four off type of thing, but being, you know, staffing outgoing, staffing's way city here, a lot of transfers, with the funding that we have. You know, this is how we can make the system work to go to that kind of a true twenty-four, true forty-eight. You know, we'd have to significantly increase our staff, which we think would be much more attractive in terms of improving the retention at that point, but it's that funding gap. And, you know, just adding one or two doesn't really fix that. It's kind of a large jump. So we see this position, you know, not just the administrative from the city side that, you know, we feel the need for and benefit of this position. But would kind of be a wrap of that hybrid where we have someone that can pick up some of those gaps before we make that large jump, hopefully to a, you know, much larger department countywide and a more, you know, conducive schedule for a lot of people that might look at this position.
Will the city be funding the position a hundred percent or is the county going to be paying some of that?
This would be funded a hundred percent by the city. When we look at where we're at in budget-wise, for the rest of the fiscal year, where we're projected to be at versus where we're at for next year, this position could be absorbed into that next year's budget. And we'd still come in line with our personnel expenses. And so between those sort of revenues that we get, you know, for fees for service and the ARPA money that the county and the city have already previously allocated, the funds are there that would cover this position plus, you know, our paramedic EMT positions through that July twenty twenty-four.
As we looked at it, ways and means the other day, we felt it was, you know, could be wait. And then I realized, like Phil said, first reading, but we're still two years out of having a countywide system if everything gets voted through. So we felt it's important to move forward and like Jacob said, with the overtime and other things, this position's, we're spending this already, you know, if we can add a person and.
It'll help with burnout.
Help with burnout and all that. So we felt it was beneficial that we'd move forward with this, at least the ways and means recommended that we move forward with it.
So the county dollars that's going into this, these sizes of, basically our, our, the way it's projected is based on ten full-time employees. We've never gotten to ten. So, but the struggles we're having right now hiring, do I hope we get to twelve? I hope we get to twelve soon, but I don't foresee that happening. And I really think there's room within the budget to, for this to fit and work.
I'd move to approve the new position of ambulance administrator.
Director.
The director.
Yeah.
A second.
Don't want to replace the wrong person. Okay, we have a motion from Harley, a second from Don. Any other discussion? Very none? Vote please, Deb.
Yes. Don.
Yes.
Joey.
Yes.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Phil. Jenna, I'm number twenty-four. This is a resolution establishing permit requirements and associated fees.
This work session, especially we had before our last meeting, this is updated on the temporary use permit fee application. So rather than tweaking the permit a bunch of times, it presented, we just kind of stated the policies within the resolution and then how it counts and accrues and then we'll let it perform that way. But with this set forth, this requires a temporary use permit to be obtained from cordless storage containers. That's already required by City Code, Chapter seventeen oh four, just puts it in here. And then a temporary use permit would be needed for placing dumpsters, trailers, construction equipment or any vehicles in, or in the right-of-way, you know, which is, you know, city public property. And then would also allow for, as a means to request parking of the vehicle on the street where parking isn't otherwise permitted. If, you know, for a temporary use, you know, contractors who can work on a house, they want to leave their car, you know, or their truck there overnight or something like that. We have a way of doing that that, you know, is allowed as opposed to something that has to be moved every time technically. As far as private property, which was a similar discussion, requirements for that. This does not require a temporary use permit for any, anything on private property in addition, what's already in effect, which would just be that temporary storage containers ordinance, which I believe that was adopted in twenty eighteen.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this? Zeb Bash, if you'd like to come up, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for giving the opportunity to speak here and whatnot. And while I have the pulpit, you know, as a very good Joe owner, business owner, I do want to say as a city, I sure like the vibe of what's going on out here. Here recently, we're working with John Ruckey Bodie on the new development of the website and advertising and showcasing some of the businesses in town, whatnot on that website, which we're working with that, that web developer out east. So seeing things like that and like Nick earlier with the public work, or excuse me, with the parks and recreation. It's, you know, it's, it's good to see stuff like that going on. It's kind of, you know, as an outside person looking in, I like to vibe with it.
Thank you.
Just why, not like complain, but also give good vibes off to you guys too. So first of all, I'd like to thank also the city council members that reached out to us and to explain this ordinance that is trying to be put in place. A little bit disappointed that, you know, sometimes it can affect our business that if this was an issue or a problem that no one come out, talk to us and visit us with it. And so I hope going forward, that's something that the city keeps in mind that if there's new ordinance that's going to take effect or trying to be put in place, that keep in mind the business owners or the residents that's going to affect, you know, reach out and talk to them. So, and then I also want to give some clarifications too. You know, reading the ordinance, I've looked at it, read it and just a little bit vague, you know. And I do appreciate eliminating that part as far as the private property. And the reason why I say that is like for during the COVID construction season, you know, we may turn eleven, twelve roll-offs a day here in the city of Oklahoma. And one thing I don't want to have happen is have the city hold up my business, you know. So, you know, the time, you know, to get a permit, who's in, okay, first of all, who is in charge of the permit? Is it us, the business owner? Is it the customer? That's one question I have on me. I don't think I can answer.
The permit is, it was drafted with the required signatures of the, the first request as well as the contractor who's acknowledging that, so we're required both.
Okay, all right. So, and I talked to Kurt Nielsen about this briefly too, revisiting about another deal. And, and he brought this up and I do agree, there's need to be, especially in the city, very good. I do agree, there's a need to be dialogue between us and the, in the city regarding putting stuff on the street or between the sidewalk and the curb or whatnot. That totally makes sense. We do that hopefully here, which, since I talked to Kurt, he referred to us now, I said I wasn't, but I'm going to talk to him. But the instance we talked about was an issue. I go, what brought this up? What, what, why does it become a problem that we don't know about? And we don't want to be the problem. And he talked about the instance up there in, I believe Dodge and Call Street where there's some contract work done there. And, and so I followed up on that and our office guy says, yeah, the contractor contacted the city of Oklahoma. And we've got permission to actually construction going, whatnot, we can put in place there for that. So when we put the roll-off container where the contractor and the city, I guess, agreed. So I guess there'll be more clarification for that going forward. So I guess, it's the subtle issues like, you know, you know, like on the weekend or weeknight or whatnot. You know, we've been pretty fortunate. We have had any major flood events or whatnot. But in the past, when we're busy with flooding, you know, say somebody's basement gets flooded and we get a phone call at home saying, hey, can you send us out a roll-off, you know? And we say, they say, hey, place it here. We say, well, we can't because it's in the city right-of-way. So we can't do that. And I'm afraid that that person's going to say, well, they're going to call ABC Roll-off Company from somewhere else and they're going to do it anyway. And I talked to a contractor today about that, asked him, got his input on that. He says, well, if it's an emergency type thing, if we can't get a whole city, if you won't do it for us, we're going to do it ourselves. We'll just move in our own equipment and place our own, you know, what do you call it, wagon or job trailer, wherever it is in place. So I guess a few questions there, just kind of, you know, that have concerns about, so. But, you know, also too, you know, talking about this and I got thinking, I go, man, we, you know, our traditional trash stuff, we are right here in Oklahoma and Cassuth County. And, you know, but our construction roll-off stuff that you refer to in your ordinance here is we go to Mason City Spencer, to Fort Dodge, to up north to, you know, across the border from Minnesota. But we did some rechecking to make sure we break some laws in other areas, other cities. And, you know, the cities that we handle, you know, or our, or service, you know, they have, you know, the, or I guess permits in place. So I guess, I don't know, a little bit, like I said, when I first heard about this, when some of the city council people came to us and asked us our input, which thank you very much and thank you diving in. But, yeah, I guess a little more dialogue between us and the city. And, and I guess also too, it's just been a huge problem and that we don't know about, that this has been taken place, that this is what warrants having a permit or warrants put in place to do this, so.
If I may, you know, I think the example you bring up about thinking that, you know, it was okay in this position and the city, you know, might have inferred that it was, but, you know, in actual life it wasn't. You know, this, this would, you know, address that in that, hey, we want the dumpster here. Okay, that's fine. You have a formal means of doing that. There's been multiple instances where it pops up and really it was the city, that, that right-of-way, that's, that's city property. The owner's responsible for maintaining it, you know, but that's property of the city. You know, so putting something there, you know, it's similar to, it may seem like they are your neighbor's property. And typically need permission to do that. Really, it's so, it's being placed in a way that isn't going to create a line of sight issue. And or, you know, just whereas of what's going on, city property, if something gets tore up, if something gets damaged, what did that, who do we contact, what happened? This allows, okay, I forgot a permit, know what the issue is if, you know, if something gets tore up or broke, who to contact. So it's really just making sure that anything that's placed on the city property is one, you know, okay by the city. And if it is placed in a way that isn't going to have a negative impact potentially on the public and importantly, providing a clear means for people to, if they, they do want, you know, to put something there that now they know the process to do it, you know, if there's a, you know, like I said, construction equipment is one that a lot of times you'll often see in the right-of-way or on the trailer, you know, in the right-of-way or in parking, rather, you know, we have laws on the books and we're supposed to enforce them. It's kind of one of those things of discretion of like, well, you want to be reasonable with people, but, you know, so this provides us a means to, okay, yep, that's allowed. You know, we don't have to worry about it, you know, looking the other way, just on that one. And it makes sure that everyone's treated fairly in that process.
What concerns me, what you just said there, is you said there's been multiple times where this has been an issue or a problem. We've never been contacted once. More though, I think if we really, other than the outside, that one time at, on Dodge Street, which we thought we did do diligence when our office guy, you know, asked for, then we get the permission from the city. So I guess that's why I'm moving along.
Thinking back with exactly what the city has told us in previous situations was the exact same. They said we can just put it there, we need to hone it, we need to, he had, whoever he talked to had, had, knew exactly what the city has told us in previous experiences. So we have, if that was a problem, we had no reason to know that it wasn't a problem. And we can, we can do an email, a simple email going forward to say, is this okay? Is that what you said as opposed to getting a permit that's probably going to take days? Those are just some of the ideas that I guess we came up with. And if it was a problem, we do wish that somebody would have called and said, hey, could you get this moved? Maybe move it around the corner, maybe come around the back. We don't allow people to put them on the street. When somebody calls us and says, hey, I want it on the street, we say that's not an option. The only time that we do allow it as an option is if it's a business downtown and they have absolutely no other option of getting rid of their, their stuff. It's not like people are constantly putting them on the street. Right-of-ways, my one concern with that would be, you know, we pull up to somebody's driveway because they want empty out their garage and all of a sudden we're hanging over on the sidewalk. We think it's going to fit for the sidewalk and all of a sudden we're hanging over. Are we supposed to pick that container back up and come back and get a permit? Or you may think that it's going to fit and then all of a sudden they have an overhang or they have something that throws that off. I guess those would be some of the administer, from, from our perspective, some of the things, the hurdles that we see. Also, the other thing with dumpsters would be, are what size dumpsters are we talking? Are we talking any dumpster? Are we talking just roll-ups? Because the other thing is we deliver a dumpster and put it up at the garage and then they have somebody, company come over and it's on wheels, so let's just move this out of the way and it's put into the parking. Are we then responsible for wherever that container gets put? I guess those, yeah, those are some of our, I guess, our.
Yeah, and that is also happening with the bigger, you know, with the contractors that have the, they moved their roll-offs too.
Yeah.
So, but I guess, so it's, yeah, that's one, yeah, like Kate just said just now, like if the homeowner might deliver a dumpster to your house and, and you move it down to the street, I mean, we the ones liable for that then? Or how's that work out, I guess, but.
Well, there's several points in there that I'd like to get to. One, if you're not allowed to block a sidewalk, so that's just a fact. You know, but if for some reason that would have to be circumstances to do that, permit would provide a formal process to allow that. You know, and I didn't mean to infer in any way that, you know, dumpsters are the only thing that's a problem. I mean, a lot, a lot of it is dump trucks, construction equipment, trailers that, you know, it is. So I didn't mean to, you know, single dumpsters in any way, you know, this is something, you know, just driving around town. You can see a lot of these and, you know, a lot of times they're, they're fine. But again, it's like replacing something on city property, so you should be aware of that, make sure it's okay. And that is not creating an issue. Again, provides that fairness element that anyone that wants to do this, those are the standards, the procedures. And if, you know, even make, you know, administrative rules, just clarifying some of those things, you know, that can certainly be done. But, you know, we've had instances where, where someone. Um, uh, but, you know, we've had instances where, where someone's wanted to, uh, you know, maybe park a piece of construction equipment in the, uh, aquatic center parking lot for a week or two over the winter because they're doing work and, you know, this is, okay, yeah, we can, you know, make that real simple now as opposed to having to, okay, it's a special thing and how do we document it? Where do we document it? Um, this provides a means for that. The, you know, the goal isn't to, to spend a whole bunch of time administering this or, or enforcing it, you know, the, the goal's compliance and then just to make sure that we're not negatively impacting the public by placing them these. Um, you know, so we, we don't expect it to be, be something that would take a lot of times in terms of review, it'd be a formality check. And then, you know, the instance of an emergency again, or we'll work with folks if something like that happens, you know. Um, ideally, if we have the, you know, who to contact, who to talk to, to see that's addressed, um, you know, and get it fixed or that timeline would be, um, you know, but if something does happen where it's an emergency, something gets placed where it shouldn't be, the objective's gonna be to educate them. You know, oh, is it gonna be out here this afternoon? Okay, you'll, you know, get it out then, but, you know, hey, you know, let's move it in this location because, you know, this is causing an issue, um, or if it's not causing an issue, okay, hey, just for, yeah, kind of sake of fairness, um, for everyone, we just need to, you know, fill out this quick permit and, you know, allow it to be here.
Right, and also too, I want to just, I mean, I don't wanna make this as us versus you guys and, um, we wanna work with you, we really do. So, um, yeah, it's, it threw me off, this, like, this ordinance pops up, like I originally talked about. There's been this huge problem that we have no idea about. We, 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 you know, as a business owner, I, I just, we wish there's more communication that way.
Well, just to clarify, this is a resolution sent before the permit process. Um, the ordinance requiring, um, permits for anything done in the right of way as well as storage pods that's already on the books, that's required. Uh, so we're, we're changing nothing in terms of what's already allowed and not allowed. It's setting up the process to make exceptions to those hard rules as opposed to add.
So, how do you ensure that if you do put this, um, this ordinance in place, like far as, um, um, far as me as a business owner or the customer or whatever, far as, you know, the latency of permit being filed for us giving it back or whatnot, how do you make sure that, you know, that's moving, it goes fast?
Well, the applications are online, right?
Yeah.
So, that part can be, they can be submitted pretty straightforward.
Right.
I think what he's asking is how soon could we expect a response once it's submitted? Like, are we talking day hours? Are we talking days? Are we talking week? I mean, kind of what that, well, what you anticipate that to look like?
I understand this is a bit of a whole, we're, we're playing here, Jacob is just, quite frankly, I don't like it, so he wanted to mess with it. I mean, I think you have one.
This could be more administrative than, yeah.
Well, I think too, Jacob, i- is this sort of, uh, maybe an education, kind of like our tree permits? It helps educate the public where these can be placed and where they can't, and by coming in for a permit, there's some education there. Uh, that's the way I'm seeing it, I, and the tree permit doesn't take long.
I mean, I, I would imagine this is something that, you know, would take hours, I mean, some of it would depend on availability. If you're having to knock that, you know, in the day, you know, person's not in, but if you're bringing it inside and with the attachment, it should be something that in a matter of minutes can be reviewed and signed off on, you know, unless there is, oh, hey, you know, that's, you know, you're right there on an intersection, that's gonna be blocking, you know, line of sight and we need to, you know, move it back this far. Um, but I don't, well, we certainly don't wanna create administrative burdens and tasks for ourselves because we have enough going on. Uh, I just, yeah, I would imagine it's something that would be turned around that same day or the next day or, you know, just kind of depending on staff a day or two, um, but I don't really see that, you know, as something that, uh, should be, um, a significant issue.
And, and, and to clarify, for public works in, in, where, where, you know, as far as that we work with, you know, if that's an issue where the roll-off is set and it's blocking public or, you know, I, I get that, I mean, far as, um, you know, far as traffic or whatnot, I mean, I would hope to think that a quick phone call to us, we would rectify it from as quick as we can, so.
One thing that might protect you is if it's a mat or an okay and they move it, then you're kind of, hey, hey, we put it here.
Yeah.
I don't know how it got over there, but when it got over there, busted their sidewalk.
Yeah.
So, that's kind of a protection for you.
And the other thing is you guys supply a good share of the dumpsters we have.
Yeah, we're one of, yeah, we're one of, um, seven, yeah, we're, we're one of seven vendors that, that service Oklahoma area. So, yeah, you're right, we're.
We also wanna make sure that they're held to the same standards before it's up.
Oh, well, they would be.
Then, then it's, it's the same or the same, you know, everybody recognizes ours is the blue one, well, all of a sudden there's other colors.
Yeah, yeah.
And you have to have a permit.
Yeah, this would set up the means to make sure.
Right, this would make the uniformity there.
And as far as your question about the size of the dumpster, we're not talking two wood roll-off or.
The two timber.
No, we're talking big roll-off.
Do you not even talk dumpsters, yard and a half, two, like, sorry, because if you're only talking roll-ups, like.
Okay.
And, cause, you know, placement of, of trash and recycling, that's regulated in an entirely separate code of it's stored on premise and then it's supposed to go to the curb. Um, so that would not be impacted at all by, by this.
But I, I guess I would go back to the point of like, there's an emergency, you know, during the summer storms or something. Like if they do get called, because they are local and they'll probably get called first to bring something on site quickly for somebody, the city potentially could grant them a little forgiveness for not having the permit paperwork in place over the weekend when no one's available. You know, we'll probably be, you know, forgiving in that point that, you know, help this person out in town, not hold them up based off of we don't have the twenty-five bucks and the paperwork all signed up. As long as they, you know, they properly place it as best they can.
There's reasonable discretion in the ministry of these things and, yeah.
In some of those situations, we'll probably be out helping.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Right, yeah.
So, we'll try to help them with that.
And is this, is this gonna be looked at, reviewed by Dever and signed up by him or is, who, who all has that?
He's, he's one that decided for that already.
So, is he, will he be the one to review all of these and sign off on them?
Between Dever and I.
Okay, good.
Because, you know, if one comes in and it's, it's a very easy one to approve, Dever's not here, I can look at it and say.
Okay, that's what I wanna make sure is, oh, for probably a vacation or something.
Yeah, Dever will be the main contact for these permits, but again, with Dever not being here, it would be me. If I'm not here, then Jacob, but I would think between the three of us, we can get those permits signed up in less than twenty hours.
And I think it operates similar to like, you know, right of way permits, which are required. If you're being working right of way, a lot of times you have things that pop up that are last minute, there's a gas line break, I mean, there's something that needs to happen now. And, you know, we facilitate that process just fine, um, in terms of getting them signed off and, and then it's not creating an administrative
So, did.
burden on our part or the, um, property or your part.
Wouldn't it be fair to say with all the discussion that this is just a repetitive permit with stuff that's already on the books?
Well, the ordinance is regulating these are already on the books. What the permit does is provides a means to implement those ordinances in a way that grants an exception that's fair and standardized, not.
What are the repercussions if somebody doesn't, doesn't get the permit?
The, uh, the first, uh, um, you know, all these things, the, the education, just, you know, get, get compliance, um, and, hey, you know, can we get you to take care of this? Um, you know, I, I always see something where we would go after an entity for, um, you know, for something like this, it would have to be an excessive and habitual abuse of not getting permits for the right of way. Um, you know, that, again, we, we are, you know, it's a very similar system, that, that seems to work just fine. Um, I, I don't foresee that, um, as, as a major problem.
I mean, there are permits that need to be had for other things. I mean, if you're gonna build, if you're gonna plant a tree, I mean, there's permits for, for other, so.
I mean, right, yeah, yeah, anything on the books is if you're gonna do anything in the street or in the right of way, you have a city council permission, like for a street closure, or you need a permit. Um, just placing things in the right of way is something that, you know, has happened in the past and now, you know, it's just happening more and more. It's just, okay, let's just provide a means to allow that in a, in a formal way.
So, obviously, this is more of a problem, just us, because when you're talking like it's more and more, I mean, I can only think of literally just a, a head, less than a handful of times where we've had that issue where we were on the, we're on the street and or, uh, um, and there was been dialogue, which unfortunately enough, I have Kurt's cell phone number, if he likes or not, but, uh, where other vendors are not, you know. And, but I just, I guess, in the, the big scope of things where they're recovered for the other roll-offs in the other communities, we don't do this permit, we don't have this, and I checked on it just to make sure I wasn't breaking your rules I didn't know, know about, but I just, I just, I, I think it's really a non-issue. I mean, like I said, for us personally or our company, I can only think of a, a few handful of times where it happened and then there was dialogue with you guys regarding that, so, um, I'm just going back, Kurt, thinking back here.
Well, more than just bigger dumpsters, we have work crews, um, we have work trucks and sit in the same place for a month.
Cause the, the con, the conversation I had with the contractor today, um, he ordered us, uh, ordered up a roll-off for us up over in, um, Harrishire. And, uh, so I, I had him on the phone, I talked about that and I said, hey, if you have this, if you need a permit at four o'clock on Friday and I can't get ahold of somebody, what are you doing? He says, I'm not gonna get you guys, I'm gonna go get my dumpster and bring it in parking, hmm, wouldn't wanna do that. So, that's what I'm concerned about. We, we got played by the rules, but I don't know if anybody else will have to, even though you intend it to be that way. And like you said, the conversation went, okay, if ABC Roll-off Company comes in because we can't get a permit, what's the repercussions there? They're gonna do like everybody else does, they're gonna pay for forgiveness later, so.
Well, first of all, if this permit is approved, we're gonna notify all contractors in the area that this permit is required. So, it's gonna be an educational piece and if they don't get the permit, then it'll be another educational piece we're gonna be contacting. But this is not just for roll-off dumpsters, it's for contractors who wanna leave their construction trailer or a storage pod in the right of way. A lot of storage pods, we don't know who rented them, who owns them, uh, who's responsible for them. And if they're, they're allowed to be there for two weeks, that's it. So, if they're there for a month, then we're trying to investigate who put it here, how it's been here. This is a way for us to regulate our ordinances. It's not against you guys at all.
No, hey, one question, that brings up another question here because it's not in the verbiage of your ordinance. So, say if I come to your house and you're cleaning out your house, we provide you a, a roll-off and, well, you, you emptied it three times. We gotta get a separate permit every time we do that or just that one permit?
If it's on private property, you're gonna have to get it at all.
If it's on, say if it's on your, say it's on your street, you say, like, say if uptown, if you have a, um, where there's really no place to go other than, uh, another few.
So, there's, there's a sixty-day time limit, so we submit your permit. They can simply be, hey, we're gonna be here from these dates, it's gonna be coming and going as it fills up, okay.
Yeah, it's not initial reservation, it was on, it was in the application.
Well, anyway, I wanna say, um, just close out here, you know, my more personal thing, I just don't feel this is really needed, okay? I think this is gonna add a little extra work ethic into our end and also you guys, I mean, I don't wanna be that way. I think that the overall scheme of things, we're just talking about a handful of times, is from our aspect, we have to be on the right of way. And we try to have that dialogue, and we do have that dialogue with other communities, we do work with too. But, um, with that said, I mean, um, we don't wanna work against you. I mean, I know you guys aren't trying to work against, hopefully not trying to work against us, but, um, um, we have a good working relationship and we don't keep it that way too, so.
One thing I would like to add to it is if, um, this goes into place and you do, do what you talk about for kind of the contractors, I think homeowners also need to be, um, notified of the, we need to have education to them as well in some, some fashion. Just because it, yeah, contractors are a lot of our business, but there's a lot of homeowners that call and they're doing, cleaning out their mom's house, they're doing this, they're doing that. There's a lot of those kind of situations, but I think education, if you're gonna do this, needs to be a huge piece of it and not just something that's kinda vague and thrown out and like everybody's had, I think, education would be here.
Yeah, I agree, and I think it'd be something that's sort of revisionary what we do right now for required right of way permits, required tree permits. And this would be it.
Whatever, whatever ready permit from the, we, we can do a press release, put it on the city's website, on the Facebook page, everything, just trying to educate people.
One thing they did bring up that I don't see listed here, I thought I had seen it somewhere, was when you talk about the size of containers. Um, we probably need to specify anything over a certain size.
Well, it, it states roll-off dumpsters, so.
Oh, I didn't see that, I guess.
Little ones with wheels aren't roll-off, but those are, it will apply.
And, you know, and something like this, uh, you know, how it works is we, you know, we have the, the ordinance sample law and, you know, in this case, the resolution said we have the policy, you know, using the objectives. And then in addition to that, you know, can't, at every single kind of just operational feature have approved by a resolution or an ordinance? You know, there's a working set of administrative rules and policies of how we know about interpreting this and applying them. You know, so in those, we can draw that threshold as, you know, anything under X, we're not, you know, we're just gonna consider that fine. Anything over X, that's gonna be, uh, required. If, if we wanna give the details, it's, uh, we'll just make it up. Um, you know, we, we can entertain that and, and continue to work on this. Um, that would be enough to direction of council.
I think personally, I would like to see it spelled out a little bit more, just to feel comfortable with what, what we're agreeing to. And I think it sounds like everyone else would be a little bit more comfortable if we had a little bit more detail in there and kind of would address some of the points that we talked about today.
Yeah, cause it covers detached trailers, construction equipment. Construction equipment means a whole lot of different things to everybody. I mean, you sit down and ask ten people in here separately what they say construction equipment is and you're gonna have dozens of different responses.
And that's something to go through with the administrative rules, that would be designed in that limitation because like with anything, as you go about, things come up that you can foresee, and so we don't go back and then pass a resolution declaring that one little detail. We determine, okay, this is our policy and how we treat these things documented, and then that's how we approach it moving forward.
And as you say in this, it allows it for sixty days, so you don't have to specify every piece you're talking about, but that this has a time limit, which is acceptable.
Yeah, I just ask if this does go forward, which, yeah, obviously you guys know I don't wanna, I think, but it goes forward just the latency of it. I just, we just can't be held up in the whole art, this is up, just waiting for the city to give us what we need for, for our service.
Honestly, the way I see the approval process going, I would like to have a fax number for the, the company or an email address for the dumpster company or whoa, to where the minute we approve it, we can scan it in and email it to you or fax it to you. So, you're not having to come back to get the actual permit, you're gonna have it as soon as we approve it.
And you guys got any questions for me? But, all right.
I guess I'm just one of the two signatures, that just seems to be, it's linked in the process. I understand why we do it, but would, would, would they just, like a roll-off, wouldn't they just be the one to charge the extra? But, I mean, if you gotta chase down the homeowner, then get the business person to sign it, it just seems like, I don't see where that's quick.
Well, the, the reasoning, um, behind this is, so we have contact information for both. We have contact information for dumping, definitely, but say waste management comes in or X, Y, Z.
Well, I'm just, I'm wondering if dump-it's the one that just fills it out with the address they're putting it at. Normally it's three hundred dollars to have a roll-off, now it's three twenty-five, whatever the situation may be. You still have the address where it's at, they're the only ones that are gonna move it, I'm surely not moving the roll-off or anything like that, so I, I guess I don't understand where the two.
People that hook up to it, so.
Are they? Okay, that, that answers that question a little bit, cause I'm thinking I'm not moving it.
The other thing, Randy, we will have contact information of the homeowner or the business owner. So, they're aware of the whole situation also. If there's a rogue company that comes in and does something that we don't know how to get ahold of them, we can get ahold of the homeowner. They're the ones renting it and actually paying dump-it for the dumpster or whatever business. So, our first contact would actually be the homeowner or business owner, cause they're the ones responsible for telling them if I'm getting it. You guys don't keep it on your books, okay, this can only be your sixty days, we gotta look it up.
And as we're, as we're sitting here talking about this, um, you know, it's just, look at this discussion here, we're not getting the ordinance, you know. And we get to the ordinance, I just hope it's not like this when. I just hope it's not like this when the ordinance actually takes place and it's seamless is what my biggest concern is, so, but, um.
And the genesis for this came, you know, out of, you know, building official, you know, building department, because, you know, we think it will be more efficient, um, from our standpoint, the standpoint, as opposed to when we find something that shouldn't be there, now he's having to spend how much time running around, who's, who's, who owns this, who put it there, knocking on doors, okay, no one's home, um, you know, so, so, you know.
So it must be, obviously, it's a problem at building on a company because our number's right outside of it.
Well, yeah, this isn't a, a dump-it.
No.
This is, you know, as an owner, um, you know, of the property, um, how we regulate on our ordinances and, and have a system that is fair.
Yeah, I think the homeowners and the contractors are going to be the ones that really need to be, to know about this, um, because normally you don't do a project like that, you know, you have to plan ahead of time, I'm going to do this, you know, I've got to tear the shingles off next week when the weather's good, or have a contractor do it, you're going to contact them how long ahead of time before you can get one to do a job like that? Um, the dumpster may possibly be last minute, but I wouldn't think most people would do that.
You, you're right.
But I would think they would have this permit taken care of quite a bit ahead of time.
For us, like, I'll come in the office and, um, our office guy and say, okay, what's, what do we have on the books for a roll-off trailer? Well, we got three, that's a slow day. Nine o'clock, I get a phone call from him, says we got, you know, thirteen or fourteen on the go, you know, so, I mean, that's why I'm a little bit worried about the, you know, the, how speedy this is far as permits and whatnot. Now, if all of them on city building, no, but.
Or if they're all on private property, you're good, but.
But is there times where it's, yeah, that's, I just wanted to show that's, that's from our end standpoint, from business standpoint, that's what we use.
If we're on, from our end of it, if Devere's doing it, I just worked with Brad today and nobody, you can't use phone books, you might as well throw that away, because nobody has their name in the phone book, I went through three or four layers to find Brad's phone number, that's scientific.
That's by design.
For our end, too, if the permit, help on their cell phone is right there, it's like, okay, it's there, let's call it, prompt them.
And, yeah, if you're concerned with Friday afternoon at four thirty or whatever, you can't get a permit approved and they need it for the weekend, I, I think the city could work with you on that, if you're, you or the owner, or if you're Monday morning, go out and you had to have a dumpster Friday afternoon, a roll-off, drop, uh, here's our permit, you know, we're willing to work with you on that.
I guess, one last time, seriously, um, I know my wife and I, we're, we're proud to call, I'll go to home, I'll go to our home and raise our kids here, we think you guys got a great thing going up here, so, but thanks for giving me time and this and about this, and if there's any future questions, like, except for any future problems, um, I mean, I'd love to contact us and talk to us directly too, so, okay, thanks, luck.
Thanks, Sam.
So we can either consider the resolution as is, um, you know, propose some changes, um, you know, based on the discussion tonight to the resolution, um, or if there are particular items that would like to be seen or changed in there, you know, you can give us that, you know, specific direction, you can go in and make sure that those things are spelled out and bring it back in the future, um, or, or a lot of companies decide to, you know, just not have a permit.
I think the permitting process is important for a lot of the reasons that you have pointed out, it lets you know who is doing what, so that they're easy to contact if need be, and, um, I guess I'm happy with moving forward with it, but if anybody else thinks we need to delay it and work on it, um, speak up now. I think it should be tabled and get some more, get more specific on some of the terminology.
I, I would agree, I would, I would have to vote no tonight, I, I think that what we're looking at is a good thing, I could see voting for it, but I, I'd like to see a little bit more on the size, what the repercussions are, the process of approval kind of all stated, just kind of clarify some of that stuff, so that we know for sure what we're.
I'm at a point where we've had three discussions on this, I don't even know if it's necessary, we've had so much one way or the other, it's a little bit of redundancy to me, I don't, I, I'm debating whether the permit's even needed, I, I don't, I mean, I haven't seen a permit take this long to pass because there's so much different discussion and how we wrote it, and is it a real problem? I, I, I'm not so sure it is, and we're adding something there that isn't needed, but if it was going to move forward, in my mind, it would have to be spelled out a little bit clearer, I, I'm just not so sure it needs to even move forward.
I would make a motion then to eliminate this addition to the, whatever number we're on, eliminate this addition to the ordinance number ten thirty-nine.
Well, that, that's.
That was already there, that's the ordinance, that's already there.
You'd go through three readings to change that.
Yeah, we would be, you would be maybe not permit required for, yeah, the.
Because, because the temporary use permit is already required for.
Yeah, we did that a few years back, yeah, that ever.
Would you just be tabling that?
Eliminating the addition to that, eliminate this addition to that, so.
The permitting application.
Yeah. So that it doesn't come up again.
My, my concern on that would be right now, there's a number of instances where we know these things are out there, um, it goes in that discretion of enforcement, but they are technically illegally possessing that space. The goal of the permit is to provide a means to allow, you know, reasonable use of, of that space, but providing a means to, to approve it, um, as opposed to either not enforcing this on the books or an ad hoc enforcement where we're treating people unfairly, uh, because everything's kind of on its own. This is a, if I have a permit and you can, um, you know, get in, in the resolution as integrated as you want, but I think it's, it's an important avenue to make sure that if someone wants to do something, as if the city, we can say that, yep, that's allowed and, you know, you're not technically breaking the law.
Well, yeah, and again, if, if the permit can be accessed quickly, how, how does this permit differ from a tree permit or a permit if I want to put up a fence, or a permit if I want to build a house? I mean, there's permits for all of those.
Yeah.
So.
You know, and some of those, you know, just.
So that we can regulate and, and see who's doing what and.
It's, you know, sometimes a car, you know, additional interview, but things like tree permits, right-of-way permits, I mean, they're very straightforward and I mean, extremely quick turnaround on those, and, I mean, those are probably the two I'd equate this permit, um, you know, to.
So there's already right-of-way permits then?
Yeah, and right now, we could technically have this as a, as a right-of-way permit.
So is it not redundant?
Well, the right-of-way permit is more for work in the right-of-way, not using the right-of-way for storage or something.
I think it'd be more confusing for people if we called it a right-of-way permit, um, because that infers actual work in the right-of-way and folks may not know where the right-of-way is, um, but even that, you know, we, we still, we still want a separate permit, you know, a permit form and a process, um, but, you know, you could do it from the right-of-way.
As it stands right now, I think you should keep it as temporary use permit, keep it worded as that, but as it is written right now, we don't have any clear direction on what the repercussions would be, so to the point of the mayor, we have building permits, we have, um, the other permits for the electricians and everything like that, if they don't comply with those permits, we pull, they can't do construction, they can't get occupancy, we can pull things on that, we don't have any repercussions right now for this, so until we have that, I don't know what we can do.
There's no point in a permit if there's no repercussions.
But aren't there standard repercussions?
The, the current repercussion is you're violating the ordinance.
Which is a municipal infraction.
So what happens?
Um, first offense is, um, seven hundred and fifty dollars a day, and then every day after that's a thousand dollars, um, I mean, that's the maximum.
Is that, is that the homeowner or the?
Or, yeah, you know, but, but, you know, when we have things like that, the goal's always to educate, just get it taken care of.
We would.
Everyone, everyone like pulling down that ramp, but we, way the ordinance is, we do already have the, the powers to, you know, um, applying municipal infraction, um, but without having permitting process, that application, um, is kind of ad hoc, again, so it's like, if we have a permit, then we've got a formalized means for that, it's clear, it's fair, it's transparent, and, uh, because, you know, right now, with no permit, if, if we were to, to do something like that, and we get the, well, you know, you let them do it, um, or, you know, I talked to this guy and he said, you know, he talked to this person, they said it was okay, well, this provides a formal process to make sure everything's treated the same.
They're still going to say those things, you're still going to have people saying, he said, she said.
And then we say, well, is there a permit and was it approved? If the answer's no, well, then.
I mean, would you guys feel better if we put instead of municipal infraction, a first offense of twenty-five dollars price, second offense fifty dollars, and, you know, third offense be municipal infraction? I mean, we, we want to educate people more than what we want to find them and take them for.
That's the last thing I want to do on these.
Exactly.
Yeah, sure. I think we need to table this, because I don't think we're going to get it, you know, I think it's a good idea, but right now, the way it's written, I'm not sure that, you know, it's enforceable, I don't.
Given the, the series of lengthy discussions that we had on this, it's taken nine days, would, I think maybe they.
Have to have a working session or something, again, to.
They take it to the streets and sewer, hash out all the details with that committee, and then until that committee is comfortable with it, then we bring back the full council, that maybe it means to.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I move we table this resolution.
Is that what we need, Paul, is a, or, so that everybody's in agreement to table it?
Well, I think what you could do is just not do anything.
Yeah, okay.
Because if you table it, then if you're tabling it to a certain.
The next meeting.
Then that resolution would come up again, so I think.
It's sort of going our old business.
Forty-hour discussion.
No motion for that action.
Okay.
Just a tapping of the four streets and sewer, and then it's, I mean, premeditated by that committee, we'll bring it back to the full council.
Okay, so we'll move to agenda, I am number twenty-six, pertains to a permit application for firework sales.
Wow, an early one, real early.
While O'Leary's fireworks has submitted an application to set up a temporary fireworks stand, Bonkers Park will launch an operation from June fifteenth to July tenth, the permit documentation is submitted, appears to be in line with the city ordinance.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Don, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. That brings us to the end of our published agenda, I believe it's six forty-five, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.